Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robert Inserpi?
Here.
Richard Donnelly?
Here.
Roger Brunswick?
Here.
Barbara Craig?
Here.
Chairman Kurlander?
Here.
Dom Konczakowski?
Here.
Russ Winn.
We have a quorum. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Motion made.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hands. It's a roll call here. Good. Passed. Before we go any further, there's an item not on the agenda that we have to attend to, and that's the election of a vice chair. Because we're a new board now. And the... Inserpi has served as vice chair. He's willing to continue.
Pardon me?
I said, "You've served as vice chair for..."
Right.
Did there are a motion? I make a motion to retain Mr. Inserpi as vice chairman emeritus.
Make coffee for everybody.
And there's a second.
Second.
Any further nominations? Nomination? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item of business is public comment. Does anybody want to make a public comment before we get started? Now we have the hearing involving property at 27733 Hickory Boulevard. This is a request for a variance.
Good morning. For the record, Jay Sweet with Community Development. Real short.
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Do they want to make a presentation?
They... I talked to them this morning. They can answer questions if you have any. One's the owner and one's the builder. They're not used to making presentations, so... It's... Soon we will proceed this way. This is a request for variance on a lot on Hickory Boulevard, right across from Beach Access Number Two, if you're familiar. The lot is, and we'll see in a minute, is not... Does not meet the standard depth. These are lots that were platted in the early 1900s, back when plating laws and zoning laws didn't exist as we know them today. And so they have a lot, and it currently has a house on it. The... This is a survey of the property.
So it was the early 1900s. But since that time, there have been various changes in the code, various changes in...
Correct.
And none of that has changed. The... It's still, on this property, it's still 25 feet from water's edge.
Correct.
And the sideline is as well.
Correct.
So, cutting to the chase here, my question for you is, tell us, what's exceptional and extraordinary about this property? The law requires that for them to get a variance, they have to show that there's something exceptional or extraordinary.
Okay.
What is exceptional or extraordinary here?
What is extraordinary is the lack of depth of the lot. And what's exceptional here is that they already have a house on the property, and the variance is requested will bring a new home into greater compliance than the existing house currently is.
But could I ask a question, too? I understand that this is a grandfathered-in lot that comes before zoning. But the current owner purchased this in 2018, right?
Right.
And in 2018, when they purchased that, they had to be aware that it was, one, a non-conforming lot, and, two, that we have zoning rules now that determine setbacks, particularly, I would say, at this point in time, that are important near bodies of water. So what... I don't see that sort of... They couldn't know they weren't at fault part of the law when they were fully aware, when they purchased this, that it was non-conforming and what the current law was. So tell me how you get around that.
Okay. Let me go through a little bit of background here, and I will address all of those.
Okay, thanks.
So that you get a feel for what's going on here. And I think it'll come to an understanding. If we look at the property as it currently exists, they're about eight and a half feet from the mean high water currently. The way the house is, they do have their 25-foot front yard setback. And they currently meet the required side yard setbacks on the property. So the rear yard setback is the setback that's in violation currently. So there's where the house that exists now. And I guess to give you another picture, that's at an exceptionally high tide versus just the mean high tide. But you can see that that house, as it currently sits, basically, if it wasn't for the mangroves, you'd just fish off the back porch. Of course, this house was built in the 50s, and I think that was probably as much a design feature at the time as anything else. The owner purchased the property.
Was that picture taken in January of 2000?
No, I have the wrong date there. That picture was taken in, I believe, it was early 2019.
That was about October of 2000.
Okay.
October.
So, but what I wanted to point out here is how close the existing house is. Now, the owner had purchased the property and was... And he can correct me if I'm saying this wrong. They believed they were going to be able to come in here and simply renovate the existing house and move in and enjoy the house on the water. The problem is, is we have the FEMA regulations that says the value of the structure is the basis, and you can only improve it 50% over a five-year period. And we have that in our code, and it's in the building code. And it's also a requirement to keep the community rating that we have for all flood insurance in the city. So that is a very important aspect of this. That structure, the value of it, as you might imagine, being built in the 50s, being where it is, the structure has little value compared to the land itself. And so, basically, any improvements, just changing the windows, would exceed the 50% rule. And so they realized they can't upgrade the property to the extent that they wanted to. So then they decided to try to design a new home. So there's where the first step in this equation is, whether their claim is that, when they purchased, they didn't understand, they thought the 50% rule was the value of the purchase price, and that they would be able to go from there. So that was a mistake on their part. This is their proposal, which would be 20 feet off of Hickory instead of 25, and then instead of being eight feet, they'd have a minimum of 15 feet off the rear where it is. So what's... The question is, also, are we allowing them... Are we going to deny them the same enjoyment as others? This lot, 65 feet, roughly 65 feet deep. Most lots are 100 feet deep. So when you apply the rear water setback and the front yard setback, you want to reflect a single white trailer with design of home. So the question is, based upon the character of the neighborhood, the surrounding properties, what's the best way to address this? And that's where the staff has come at this, is that it's not just what happens on this property. It's what the literal interpretation of the law would do to the values of the surrounding properties. There's where part of our staff report comes from. The one thing is, this is not the first time in this general neighborhood that this type of variance had been given. And these are examples with zoning dates starting from before the city was incorporated in '89, in '08, in '16, and in '15, where water body setbacks at 15 feet and 20-foot street setbacks had been granted. And so you have a situation where also you... The individual is similarly situated and asking for what his neighbors have already done.
So instead of going to the city council and asking for a change in the law, they come and bypass the council and say, "Well, we need you to grant us a variance because city council won't change the law." We are effectively at that point legislating, are we not?
I don't think so. And here's why I don't think so. You have a situation, and really, that's more of a dairy question, lawyer question than a planning question. Part of the one things you look at is that, what is the cause of the variance? In other words, when you come up with a series of setbacks, those setbacks are for a conforming lot, okay? So if a lot was 100 foot deep, this wouldn't be a problem because that would be the standard lot. Lots... The lot meets the minimum width, and they're meeting the minimum side yard setbacks because they can obviously do that. So the question is, is that at what point is the impact so great that it is worth having a variance? And in this instance, since you would be potentially hurting the neighborhood by having a home that would not be compatible, is that... The other thing is this. This also requires them to bring everything into code compliance versus something that could get blown down in a hurricane. And then we have the reconstruction ordinance.
That's a good question, because at least my understanding of grandfathering in and allowing non-conforming lots after you've made a zoning requirement is to protect the current owner of the property. And then if what you're going to do is say, "Anytime that non-conforming lot needs to become more non-conforming, we're going to ignore our laws and allow that to happen." I don't think it's a hardship, at least in my mind, a hardship if you buy a piece of property and know it's non-conforming, and you can't do anything with it without getting it further non-conforming to the property purchaser. But it's a hardship to the city, it seems to me, if we have rules that we keep having to make exceptions to because of some individuals' desire to develop a house on a piece of property that probably it's not appropriate to develop a house on. Isn't that one of the points of grandfathering? Letting you have it while it's there, but not necessarily making it... Well, go ahead. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, no, I'm just... The other part of this is, you know, we are... We are... There's... In the questions that are being asked, it's implying that the current standards for lot size, dimensional standards for setbacks are... Were made as a result of some life safety issue, okay? The reality is that in the 1950s, or whenever lots, when these were built, homes are smaller. Homes became larger. The trend towards larger homes moved forward. And so cities' codes adopted to deal with larger lots. Clearly, their homes can be built on these smaller lots. There are, in our historic district in downtown, there are numerous homes on small lots. But into the question of, you know, we have in our comp plan and our codes how we deal with non-conforming lots. But we're not just dealing with the non-conforming size of the lot. We're dealing with how that interacts with our current standards for setbacks on much larger lots. The reality is, if the home gets destroyed, and we don't have a variance process to recognize this, you've basically made the lot undevelopable.
But doesn't city council... They're aware of this. They could change the law anytime they want to.
And then remove lower setbacks on all larger lots?
They could, in a particular area where they deem it necessary, they could create a district and do it.
They certainly can, and in areas like the downtown where it is predominant. But this, I don't...
But instead, what you have is you have six, seven people coming in and saying, "Put the blinders on. The law really doesn't mean anything. We're entitled to a variance."
Well, I mean, calm down. Because the other part of this that I think we have to realize is that this board is here. The law that has been set by the city council, and city councils previously, is to create a zoning board to deal with issues like this. If your answer is, "There shouldn't be variances," then there shouldn't be a zoning board. I mean, the city council could clearly set up a standard for postage-stamped lots that are outside of certain districts. They could also set a standard through using the process of the zoning board.
But councillor, respectfully, we're aware of that. But here you have a whole series of lots, not one lot, that's unique and has something exceptional about it. But you have a whole series of lots that are non-conforming. And that's very different than if you have a piece of property that sits by itself. But everybody comes in and takes the shortcut.
Where do you draw the line? I guess that's the question.
That's fair enough.
And that is...
How many... It's happened so many times. You say the last person is the one who's supposed to go in and rezone the property for everybody?
How many pieces of property are in this area?
Well, that would be the question.
So actually, the fact is, is almost all lots on Hickory are non-conforming. Because they're mostly 50 feet wide, okay? But understand that the council, in the code, addressed side yard setbacks. So the side yard setbacks, if you're a 75-foot wide lot or seven and a half feet, if you're a 50-foot lot, they're five feet. So they address that because the vast majority, probably 98% or so of the lots on Hickory, are 100 feet in depth or more. And so they meet the minimum depth requirement. So they saw that as a reasonable alternative to a bunch of variances, to your point. The difference is, you have within two or three old plats where they didn't really know where the bay was, to be quite honest. If you look at the plat, it says, and they say, "To the edge of the water." There's no dimension to the bay. And so, because nobody wanted to go back there and get bit by mosquitoes and then chop through the swamp and so forth. And so you have these lots. There's probably, I'm going to estimate, there's 20 or 30 of them that nobody knew what the depths were. And they're scattered about. And so the best remedy is to know the facts and to grant, as the statute says, or as the code says, the minimum variance required, not the maximum, but the minimum required, to have the least impact on the neighbors, to allow them to enjoy their property similar as the neighborhood. And that's what the attempt is here, is that... Because frankly, almost all the lots over there don't meet the code requirements, but they were skinny. And so that was an easy adaptation to put in. It is these ones that vary from 50 feet in depth to over 100, depending upon how the bay and how the erosion and all the things have happened over the years.
May I?
Certainly.
I live out there. I know the maps. The lots are from 50 feet depth to 270 feet depth. And so you can't have a cookie cutter... The city council couldn't come up with a cookie cutter depth on properties to eliminate these variances. And we wouldn't want you to. We would rather that it comes into the zoning board to look at each individual situation because it is unique out there. I mean, the bay lots are very unique. And just, you know, from my observation of those maps, I know them inside and out, so... Just my thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to... Mr. Dahmer, got a question for you. You remember back, I'm going to say 2015, '16, we had a case, similar case like this? And basically, the same issues were brought up. But it was passed anyway, was approved anyway. So if history repeats itself, what are we going to do? We're going to say, "Yeah, you can do it, but no, you can't do it?" It's not right. It's not fair, any way you look at it. So, and it's not the first time we had a case. Am I right, John?
No, it is not the first time we've had a case. In fact, these cases have gone on a lot longer than I've been around. What I think that we kind of moved off center a little bit before we really got some traction. And I think we want to go back, take a step back, and kind of reframe this. In the fact that what you have in this particular section of Hickory are houses that vary, but are very close to the water. And if you were to look at an aerial of this, and unfortunately, I apologize for not having one. But if you look at an aerial of just this neighborhood, these sections of lots, you'll find that what's being requested is not unique. It does fall in line more with what is existing out there today. And I'm not going to say that what's out there today is the best development pattern or the worst. I'm simply going to state that it's there. And so the status quo is basically something we have tried to achieve along Hickory. It is what it is, what it is. And we're not looking to make a lot of changes out there. We have laws, and anything that goes outside of that rule obviously comes to you, and then ultimately to city council. So for this particular case, the variance that's being requested on the back of that lot, if you were to look at this section of lots, is not exceptional in terms of the request. And that actually is what is exceptional about this particular property. Why should they have this setback as opposed to going with the 25-foot setback? Well, if you look at what's out there today, they are not going to be able to take advantage of more of their lot than their neighbors are. They are simply really requesting, "Can I build to the same footprint that my neighbors have?" And some of that has to do with erosion. Some of that has to do with how time has treated that section of land. But the simple math is, we are today in a situation where if you were to have them build within all the appropriate setbacks, you're probably not going to get a product that you want. And you're not going to get a product that moves the city forward. So while they could do it, a lot of things are physically possible. I don't know if that end result is going to be something that this board or this city council, who will ultimately have to make this decision as to whether this variance is approved, is something that they want as matter of policy.
Thank you, Chair.
May I ask you another question, as long as we have you there? You mentioned the word erosion, which of course is happening all along water bodies as we have the issue of water rising, however you believe that happens. So as I've read what the state is requiring and what we are expected to do as players in this game is to not make the situation worse. So if you have a setback that's on the water side that's eroding, why would we want to make a variance that allowed them to get closer to the water that's only going to cause more problem for them and for the city in the long run when that water comes up?
Because the city attorney hit on a point that I'm going to expand on a little bit. It's not the setback that creates additional safety. It's going to be the elevation of that. It's going to be the construction type. It's going to be the standards of the building code that somebody is meeting today that the house that you saw a picture of simply does not meet. That's going to keep them safer. It is not going to be whether they are 20 feet or 20 feet from the water body. It's going to be how that structure is created and built. And as a result, you're not going to see a situation where the winds or the storm or the type of emergency that would bring damage or destruction to that existing house caused the same type of destruction, or any destruction at all, to a house that was built to current standards. And it's not to say that it's going to be a fortress, but it's going to be a lot closer to a fortress than what's there today.
And that makes the assumption that this shorter setback, and that's not quite the right word, but closer to the water, that the water doesn't come up to where the house is.
Well, the water may reach the house, but you also have to understand that the elevation of the new house is going to be significantly higher than the existing house. So what is going to be at that area where the water may or may not reach, and hopefully it doesn't, but if it does, is going to be something that is designed to handle that water under velocity and not just a situation where you saw like a wood-framed house would immediately start to suffer impacts.
And if I might just... One of the conditions that the staff has placed on a recommendation of approval of this is that they enhance the shoreline protection.
But I thought that was another thing we weren't supposed to be doing, is hardening shorelines.
Well, they can do it through riprap. And riprap's not... They can't put a seawall up. But they can enhance it through riprap, and they can protect the shoreline through riprap. And that'll program probably the automatic implanting of mangroves. And that will protect the shoreline, so...
The hardening would be between the mangroves and the land so that the mangroves now will have a stopping point. They wouldn't be able to move back inland.
Actually, what happens, if you look at riprap, mangroves have an amazing way of implanting themselves in between the rocks and actually stabilizing the shoreline even more so. So when you have riprap and mangroves together, you get an added benefit. So that works very well. But that's one of the conditions that we have in here, that they have to add that to their design. Plus, the new setback is much further back than they are now. And plus, the house would be up on stilts in order to meet the flood requirements, which actually allows easier access to the rear than they have the way the house is constructed currently.
So the current house is like eight feet back from the water?
Yep.
And the proposal is to make it 15 feet back from the water?
Yep.
And if you did the arithmetic, applying the current front setback and rear setback, both of which are 25 feet, you'd wind up with a house that's 15 feet wide?
Right.
And which is... Can someone point out the house on the aerial for us?
This is the existing house here.
Can we zoom in? Back out just a little bit. I want to see the road. There, oh, well.
Not quite that far.
That's good.
And you can see some of the other houses in the neighborhood are actually much closer.
There's one, the third house, or the second house south, looks like it's...
In the water.
On the water.
Yeah.
On the water.
Yeah.
In the water.
Some of those were permitted prior to the city incorporation, and we didn't find any variances. But the way Lee County did things at the time, they probably got a variance of some sort, but no record of it.
The lot to the north, is that a mangrove lot?
No, the lot to the north is a city park.
Oh, it is?
That is called Park B on the plat. It's the continuation of our Beach Access Number Two. One of the other conditions is, is that over time, their north driveway actually encroaches into that. And they'll have to remove that north driveway and put the driveway solely in front of their house. So that I can only assume that sometime in the future, based on demands of the city, will do something with the city property there. Although there's no plan for it.
Said it was a corner lot.
Yeah.
Well, originally, we thought it was a right-of-way, like some of the other beach accesses. But after we got in, we're doing the research, it actually is labeled as Park B.
Park B is the street. That makes it a corner lot.
Well, but the way that it is on the plat is Park B, and it's in the public domain as a park rather than a right-of-way.
I think the question he's asking is, it doesn't look like the house that we're talking about is on a corner. Does it... Is it the park that makes it be a corner because it's next to something?
What I was trying to say is, if that plat was a right-of-way, it would be treated as a corner lot. But we're reviewing the plat. We think it's a park, not a right-of-way.
Oh, it's not a corner?
Old plats wouldn't have... Aren't very clear sometimes, and why properties were set aside for different things.
Okay, excuse me. I'm looking at this graphic, and it's... Says lot nine and 10. Is this two lots?
This is actually a lot and a half.
Lot and a half. To further complicate things.
Which ironically, not that it would help any, if he has just the one lot, his side setbacks would be five. But since he has half a lot, he's got the seven, five feet. His side setbacks are seven and a half feet.
Thank you. Anything further?
Applicants here if you have any questions. We're here to...
Anything further from the applicant?
Well, I just think that... I want to clarify one thing. I don't consider this... You keep bringing up the term grandfather. But it really, we're just trying to follow the system that has been established by the council to address these lots. And we feel that we've been, you know, worked very well with the staff to design a footprint within those requirements. to design a footprint within those requirements. We're not trying to ask for anything, you know, out of the ordinary or that would complicate development on Benita Beach. I'm a resident of Benita Beach, I've lived on the beach for 30 years plus. And I'm pretty familiar with all these lots. And we've actually stepped this house back further than quite a few of them along the bayside.
Just for the record, would you give us your name, please?
Bill William Tracy.
Thank you.
I live at 27410 Hickory.
Counselor, do you wish to add anything?
No.
What is the wish of the board? Well, Mr. Chairman, in good conscience, I can't see denying the applicant his variance. We've had these variances before, always approved them. I cannot see holding this applicant's feet to the fire because of what transpired. So therefore, I make a motion that according to the findings and conclusions, that we accept staff's recommendation of approval. Is there a second?
A second?
Discussion. Bearing none?
I'd make a comment that, you know, the variance system is set up to deal with issues like this. And I guess you could almost argue that to some degree, there is a hardship in the way he's limited in the use of his property. It seems that he's made a good faith effort to make the best of a lousy situation. And it's... When one looks at the overall theme of the neighborhood and the other homes in that neighborhood that are basically bayfront homes, they aren't the McMansions across the street. I think he has a sympathetic case.
Any further discussion? Could the clerk call the roll, please?
Robert in Serpie?
Yes.
Barbara Craig?
No.
Wait, just a moment. I don't know if there's any public wish to make a comment on...
All right.
I apologize.
Sorry about that. Please, public comment.
Step forward.
Come up here?
Yes, please.
Just give your name, please, thank you.
Dave Kessel. I am his neighbor to the... So I'm right next door to him.
You're the house that's on the water, basically?
No, that's him. I got the boat, and then he's the one... Yeah, right there. We... My wife and I... My wife originally sent an email to Jay, I believe it was on Wednesday, as we had questions, didn't quite understand everything. I... He was actually over at the property snooping around, and so I came over and joined him, and he answered some of my questions. And I still had some more that I didn't quite understand. And, you know, we are... We're glad he bought that house. That house has been nothing but a problem for us. All they had were renters in there that were... Just didn't belong there. They just weren't very good people. So we're happy that he bought it. We had a... Jay answered some of my wife's questions, and then I had a few more. And, you know, I got them to him as he was leaving for President's Day weekend. And so, you know, some of them went unanswered. But our biggest concern is, and it's been touched on, is the elevation. And it's a concern of ours, and it should be a concern of theirs as well. Our yard floods. And it is... If you look at our driveway, the portion to the left, it floods. If you go further up in front of his property years ago, and I don't know who did this, and I sent this to Jay, I don't know if it was city, county, or state, they put a bus stop in, and they elevated it. So you can stand in my driveway and look up, and it's three to five feet higher. About five feet. And so, all of that water not only rushes down into the south portion of his yard, just sits in front of my house and goes halfway up. And that's, you know, that's our biggest concern is how... As the elevation goes up, we don't know what the elevation is going to be, there's nothing on here. So our concern is, as the elevation gets higher, is that going to push the water more towards us? And, you know, if that's the case, what is going to be done to stop this flooding? And it's, you know, certainly, it's not fair to that property, and it's not fair to us that this... I mean, the water literally goes up halfway up into our yard, and it just sits there. And years ago, and I wish I had my notes, but years and years ago, I can't remember, I either dealt with someone with the city or someone with the county. And they came out and walked it with me, and they said that, apparently, in between all of these lots out there in Hickory, there are kind of man-made swells or swales that the water's supposed to go down to and then go out into the back. And that doesn't happen. There's a property that is a little further up the road, a newer construction, maybe about 10 houses or so away from us going towards the south, where during construction, they had to put in a culvert. And I don't even know if this is something I'm supposed to be talking to you guys about right now or if this goes to somebody else, but they put in a culvert. So it's concrete, and it runs the whole length of their property, and it does take the water out to the back bay. And they're actually friends of ours, and they said that county, city... Somebody stopped by recently to talk about the flooding out there and came to their house and said, "This is like the model of what needs to be done out here, that we have no flooding, and this is, you know, this is what needs to be done." So that's our concern. It's not his fault. You know, it just... It comes down that five-foot slope, and it dumps into his yard, and it dumps into my yard. And so I'm just concerned that if you take it higher, what's going to happen? And obviously, you have to take it higher, or his lot's just going to be a pond. But something needs to be done about the, you know, while the construction's going on with this drainage.
Thank you very much. Are there any further public comments?
I'd like to touch on that.
Excuse me. Are there any further public comments? I'll come back to you.
My name's Steve Capuro, and I'm the one that owns the house that's on the water. I mean, my back, you come up the slider, it's on the deck. So the water, the seawall, I have a seawall. What Dave's talking about, I noticed, I did cut a trench, a swale down my side, because as Dave said, that whole... In front of his house is a hill, and the water runs both ways in his yard. It completely filled the front of our yard. So I did take a shovel, and I dug a trench, where he's talking about a culvert, and it runs out the back to the bay. So there is an issue. And it's not just there, but even the big homes across the street, you know, all the water just comes down from them. It comes across the street all the way down Benita Bay. I mean, the boulevard there, so...
I'll ask you a question. You've both talked about flooding. Is this flooding from rain, or is it titled flooding?
Rain.
Rain?
Yes.
Every time it rains?
Well, when we have our heavy rains.
Heavy rains.
Yeah, with heavy rains, I mean, my whole front yard is underwater.
So is it pretty much flooded all summer long?
Well, it dries up quick. I mean...
It does?
Yeah. It seeps through. Huh?
Ours does not dry out.
Okay. But like I said, I cut the swale down, and it relieves a lot of the water in that area.
You're asking them questions.
This has no bearing on it.
Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to add to that, there is an issue in that area. And it's the way the road is developed in front of Dave's, for whatever reason, they've got it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Sure.
I ask questions as a realtor.
This is something we've tried to address and haven't been able to get the answer on. It is that bus stop. It was raised about five feet. I don't understand why it wasn't put in front of the beach access or the park instead of this residence, but that's something that was done with Lee County and the state when they widened and redid the road. There is a drainage catch basin to the north of this property on that property line that is totally full of dirt and cleaned up. It would probably suffice to get rid of a lot of this water. I have approached the engineering department, and we're going to try to figure out some answers there. But the code right now requires that each developer maintain the water on this property and not divert it off anybody else's. So we will be required to put a drainage line and a swale along the property line before... That's part of the construction documents that are required in the current code. So I think we'll address that. What we can't address is the volume of water that sheets off the road because of that elevation and parched to both sides of the property. That is something that the city or maybe city engineering at some point could address. But it's hard to see, but that's... You can see how it slopes down to the north, and it does the same thing to the south. That's the only area along the road where they've raised the sidewalk up even with the pavement of the road. And that's probably for handicap accessibility, is what my thought was. I just don't know why it got put in front of a house instead of the beach access. Thank you.
City Council?
Are there any further public comments? So, we had started a roll call vote. If I may, does the city wish to address any of the issues raised, or...
I would just say that in the last year, specifically the last six months, the city has adopted new regulations and requirements of what they need to submit on drainage, especially on elevations, and showing their neighbors' elevation and adjacent properties to better do this. We have a drainage inspector who inspects these now that we didn't have, you know, a year, two years ago. The other thing is, this is in a VE zone, which means they can't bring any fill-in except for a small amount of structural field during construction. They have to build up. If they want to close it, they have to do all kinds of regulations. It's likely to be a stilt home based upon the FEMA rating that it is and the elevation they have to build to. So the new construction, the nature of it will solve some of the problems. And with the new regulations we have on drainage plans and so forth, I think will solve some of the others. Some of it, you know, if there's a drain there, and he can give us information, which he should when he does his survey on it, you know, we'll turn that over to public courts to see what can be done. So I think there's real possibilities there for them.
Okay, so we started the roll call, and we were up to Member Craig.
Barbara.
Barbara Craig? No, please. Chairman Kurlander?
No.
Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Roger Brunswick?
No.
Don Koncowski?
Yes.
So, we have a situation where it is a tie vote, our seventh member. In that case, the application fails. Is that correct?
It does fail. Does the... Do the members voting in the negative want to give a basis?
Well, I think that I've made my basis fairly clear with the questions that I've asked. I think that this is a lot that's non-conforming to start with, that it is in a place that has a lot of water issues, that we are supposed to be making decisions, looking to the future, not the past. And I think we, to allow something to be built here that we know is going to be flooding all the time, is not a very wise decision. I mean, I recognize this exists all around it, but I'm not sure we wish to contribute further to the problems. And I don't see this as an extraordinary issue that they didn't know about when they bought the property. You certainly can. As far as...
Sorry, our turn now.
Okay. So anyway, that's where I feel that... And I think that we have to address these kinds of issues. And I don't think there's a compelling reason for this exception.
Okay. So under the findings, I would base it on the exceptional, extraordinary conditions were not met?
Right, yes, that would be fine.
Is that the position of the remainder?
I think that the city, as a city, they should set up some sort of special district or whatever it needs to be to deal with these and make these changes so that we don't have to deal with them every so often. We have, you know, every year we have seemed to have one setback issue out there. And maybe they need to have a... I don't know what you would call it, but a special planning district.
I agree with you, Roger. But I think Jay sort of informed us of what the changes were that the city's doing. So, I mean, you know, got to give everybody a half a chance here, let them, you know, see how it works out. But in the same token, you can't hold the applicant responsible for the lack of the city, you know? So...
Yes. Don't we... By doing so, don't we push the city in a different direction to...
No, I think by doing so, and I have to side with Sussuied on this, if the city is making steps to go forward, we've got to give them a chance as well as the applicant. Simple as that. Can't hold one responsible and not the other responsible. Larry?
Just, I mean, if your idea is you want the city to change things, you know, maybe, you know, you can discuss that with them. But at this point, what are we required to do when someone comes in with an application that they don't meet the setbacks? That's just... I mean, that's law now, and that's what we're supposed to follow, is the law now. That's just my thought.
Mm-hmm. Good thought.
Let's go to the council, file a determination.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay.
Let them sort it out.
So that... We're done with this case now? And the second case on the calendar is adjourned. And can you... That was adjourned for...
The applicant to ask for it to be postponed, they are responding to some staff's comments and review. And so they're modifying their site plan in hopes of better resolving some concerns staff had.
Okay. Is there any further business to come before the board today? Mr. Donnelly?
I'd just like to make a report from the subcommittee in charge of researching the accessory development unit research, I guess you would say. We've had one meeting, we have another meeting scheduled for Thursday. You know, we'll continue to work with staff to try to craft a presentation that outlines a value or a strong look at the ADU concept. So we're just moving along. We're happy to report to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything further? Our next meeting is scheduled for March the 17th. And if there's nothing further, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Without debate, we're adjourned.